Twenty twenty five A. The Bethlehem tax plan board order seven thirty two P M. At every notice to this meeting has been provided and it went to section three D of chapter two thirty one, the public order nineteen seventy five. How unknown as a sunshine law. Roll call please.
Paul Mear.
Here.
Jose Reyes.
Here.
Judy Nelson.
Here.
Grace Anne Kelly. Ryan Mettinger. Jose Maderos.
Here.
Philip Bellin.
Here.
Brad Nelson.
Here.
Ken Chalet.
Here.
Jeff Colletti.
Here.
Steve D. Lorenzo.
Here.
Daniel McDonald.
Here.
Michael.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Open the college for Genai.
So move.
Second.
Falls in favor.
Hi.
Anything, Charlie?
Can I talk about my building?
Uh, it's not bad, Genai as well. After. Motion closed, Paul.
To move. Second.
Falls in favor.
Hi.
We have the um. Communication from Tom on Margaret Baines. Twenty twenty four O two dot D tag. Alright, in the past, we haven't really gotten some of this information. And what we're trying to do now is work to close. Um, kind of an open loop that we've had, you know, an application will come here. You know, they'll pass, for instance, with conditions, those conditions are at some point met or not met. But in the past, we really have not um found out a whole lot about it. Another issue that happens is there's escrow associated with all these applications. And so the town is now carrying these open escrows. Which in order to close the escrow, the applicant needs to request their money back. Alright, and so we have, we have some problems where professionals are getting less bills. Like three, four months after applications have been deemed completed or their services are already rendered. Um, but all that money is going to have to ask us. So what mine is putting together is basically the final checklist, check sheet. That uh all of the, all of our professionals that are involved in these applications will basically sign off on them. Um, and then we need to make a decision if we wanted. Something we haven't done that we were just kind of discussing tonight. Um, is our zoning officer opens all applications, meaning somebody goes to his own officer for um. A job that they want to do, addition or something that might require a variance or maybe not. So I'm sure makes that that determination, okay? If that determination is made, that variance needs to be done, then it comes in front of us. If she decides it. The part that is needed, we never say it, okay? But the point is, when it's, when that is signed up and it does come to us. I'm thinking once everything is completed, that then all that final paperwork goes back to our zoning officer to close that file. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
It's something that I like to administratively make sure that that happens. So she, she or it will open. Process and then ultimately close the process for that block and lot number.
Alright, so.
That sounds like a good idea.
Okay, so this, this is kind of our beginning, um, you know, Margaret Baines is, is actively requesting her. Her escrow back, whatever money she has left, um. I believe we have now got all the bills back from the professionals, if I'm not mistaken.
I'm waiting for Karen, I'm just making sure that Karen.
Um, and then all the closing's out and, you know, maybe we could start working on some of the um, the backlog that Jen is currently holding on to.
Are you looking to ultimately? Just proactively return the escrow when you tell her done?
We can't do that.
Yeah, you have to, the person has to request it.
So the M, M L U L is very specific in New Jersey, they have to request it, not only do they have to request it, it must be requested by certified mail. And then they have to ask, they have to send a certified mail to our CFO as well as the professionals that were a part of their case. Asking for the final billing, so that is the, the legal end, like after they get, you know, the professionals get it, they have thirty days to give any bills. Once all the bills are in. Our CFO has forty-five days from that date to get the money back to the applicant. But it's very specific and we can't just send it, we also can't. You know, we can't, there's no way to round the fact that they have to ask us.
But we can, so we can actually lead that to them at the beginning.
Right, and that's, I'm working on that to be part of the application process.
Right.
And um. Yeah, and it being part of the packet that they get with an example of the letter that they need to send.
I mean. I don't think that it would be illegal if we, if we reminded them that they have to do that.
Right. The other, the other piece of this is the, the. They're supposed to be getting escrow updates on their accounts, depending on the, 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 the amount of activity on the account. Each month is whether it's monthly or quarterly. And so I need to circle back, I don't know what that process is, that's not my venue, but that would be something that would prompt them as well. They get reports, they, you would think that they would open them, you know, so, but yeah.
I, I don't see any reason why our professionals can't get bills in four months, like sixty days. You know, I mean, I can understand, okay, thirty days, you know, maybe it's towards the end of the month, then they're going on vacation or something like that, but. I mean, sixty days is a reasonable time, after that, it's like, you know. How does everybody remember what actually was getting done, you know, so it, it, it starts to add some doubt and suspicion to. By the taxpayers, so, you know. I really think that we should encourage our professionals to, to get their bills in within sixty days.
Well, the other problem that we have is that in the issue of um Mrs. Baines. Is that, yeah, we did the, the resolution, but part of the, the, for her to be compliant with the condition, she had conversations with Tom with. So even though we were done, it kept coming in and then, right.
Yeah, that, that, that we understand, but it's, it's still, you know, you can still get that bill in, you know, within sixty days so that you get that closed at the end.
Right.
Are we able to put that in? In our resolution or whatever process, say they have to bring the bills or is this all fair?
I believe the, you're talking about the professionals or the applicant?
The professionals.
I believe that's part of their, their um contract, is that it's supposed to be billed, I believe it's a thirty day, um.
Yeah, I mean, if it's thirty days, then, you know, then we should hold them to those thirty days and say, yeah, your past thirty days, you don't get paid for this one. That'll get them, get their bills in on time.
You got it.
But could we communicate with the applicant, like in this case, we just got the letter from Tom saying she's fulfilled all of her obligations. Could we then contact her and say, hey, now you can go request her? Your escrow, like just everything's done, like we, we, I'm not saying. Short circuit it, but tell her, like, now's the time to go request it, like.
Well, in this, in this case, she's actually, she, she had sent something in and she asked the question, can I, you know, Monica, how do I do this? And so now um, I'll send her that information. But I think that a trigger in our, in our process should be that when uh the sort of, you know, the. When Tom sends us, it then to, for me to go and check with the other professionals. And then at that point, say, you know, send something to her in a letter that says it's been deemed, you know, you've met all conditions, here's your, you know. The letters from the professionals, just as a note, this is the, you know, you. This is the process moving forward with her putting it all together.
What's triggering, say, Tom or? Whoever may be doing this and triggering this, releasing this letter.
She did it, um, she did it because she met the last condition and she sent in, I'm not sure if it was the deed or septic design.
It was the deed, it was the published deed. So once she had that and that's officially, in her case, that was a um, a three bedroom, a maximum, a maximum three bedroom, that was key restricted. And that took a long time to actually get on her deed, so she, she got that done, she got a copy of the deed that now states that. Um, and she can now go for, you know, she can go for building permits.
So the honest, honest then is on the applicant to get everything in, Tom and pass the, all, yeah, all the conditions have to be done.
And then Tom has to, you know, on those kinds of conditions, they have to be, you know, set um. In this case, I mean, Scott might end up being that, that person, you know, he might not be Tom, but ultimately.
Whoever's there, yeah.
Who knows, area of expertise.
I think that checklist is just the right thing to come up with.
Oh, wow.
So the other thing is that.
Scott, AKA Karen.
We don't really have the mechanism, the town doesn't have a mechanism. To prevent, like, she could have already started construction, even if she didn't do the deed yet, like, well, who could have prevented her from doing that?
Well, she could have got the permits.
Construction, yeah.
Well, who knows, the permits are based on that.
Well, your, your permits are based on zoning clearance. Yeah, zoning clearance happens when, when our zoning officer issues a letter to D C A that says that that person has met, met any, any condition.
The zoning officer, when we apply conditions to something, our zoning officer gets notified of those conditions?
Once we have an actual resolution, in this case here, this is what should happen.
I just didn't know the zoning officer got a copy.
We do.
She doesn't, yeah.
We need to be.
A process in place that we can get them a little bit.
So that everything, right, there's no holes in this, and this is, if, if you don't have to come to the planning board.
Don't.
No, but even if you, I just didn't know, maybe you obviously have.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the, the process is that you go to the zoning officer, they give you a zoning clearance. To take to the, to the D C A and then you get your building permits.
Right, but if the zoning officer doesn't know what your condition is on it, they're not clearing it, they're sending anything.
Yeah, so the engineer should really just be telling the zoning officer.
But if the zoning officer, it's, let's just say she didn't comply and she went to Sarah to get her thing, she would look at it and say, oh, wait, you needed a variance.
Right.
And then, then she would double check to make sure that, you know, what are the, the requirements, because. Margaret, uh, Ms. Baines would have had to bring that in to get that clearance, because Sarah knows, oh, wait, this is not something I could have permitted.
Right.
So I think that although there's not something in the process, there is a catch. Um, and the other part of this process that I want to put in is that, once every six months or every year, I go through any applications that we've approved. With condition and send out a letter to the professionals asking if, you know, the conditions have been met, please let them know. Just so that we, we can, because we did Mulchen. They haven't opened, it's almost three years now, because it was the first thing I did when I was here. He hasn't, he hasn't moved forward on the project, so that is still wide open, he still has an escrow. I don't know what we do about that, but I'm just saying, I've not circled back around to make sure to know, I just.
He came for variance, he got the variance, and he hasn't done anything since.
And which one is that?
That was Mulchen, that was the one that's on uh. King's Lane.
What was the?
Well, the class, I mean, I put an addition to its side where it was, the house was way up in the woods.
Oh.
Way up on the hills in the corner.
So at some point, does that, does that expire?
No, no, embarrasses it.
Oh, I see.
But it's not, it's not finalized.
But. If there was no other, if there was no, I don't remember, but if there's no conditions on it, then it should be, it's finalized. And it's uh.
See, but that's a problem, you just said, and I don't remember if there is any conditions.
Well, that's probably three years.
Yeah.
And that's why this whole thing has to, we have to.
Well, that's, that's, I mean. I don't know whether or not it's legal to do, but I think that if you do not act on, on something that we usually. That we've given you, especially, you know, to, to perfect it, because I mean, you know, when you get a variance, there are things that have to be done regardless of whether or not there's conditions. To perfect it, to say that this actually happened. You know, otherwise, it could just be a variance that's sitting there for something that is totally unrelated to what we gave the variance for.
Did you just recently have the question, somebody bought a piece of property, there was an open variance, but it was like twenty-nine years and with like so many things that changed that they're gonna, they're gonna come back in?
Stony, Stony Lane off of uh.
Don't ask me.
I guess the train tracks on uh. Well, I promise.
Yeah, I mean, we should, I think we should look into, into some sort of. Of a sun setting, if you don't perfect the, the variance. Within a certain amount of time, I mean, three years is.
Well, that, that would see if it's actually, that's something I was talking about.
Yeah.
I don't think you can.
No, it's not.
A variance, a variance, once issued is safe with the property.
Yes, I realize that, once issued.
But we issue it.
But is it actually?
They have it built in, they can, it's kind of saying, if you have a septic design that's on a piece of property. You don't build the house, does a septic design expire? I don't think it does.
I mean, as, well, it, it, a septic design.
You can extension it every, every three years.
I figured you might know that.
Yeah.
And, and also septic design is designed for.
Well, that's more than health, and that's.
It's designed for the house, so if a septic design, if you get a septic design approved. And then the guy doesn't build his house. The septic plan that you have there may not.
Size, yeah, that's not.
Be adequate for what you're building, so it'd have to be reviewed again. I guess that's.
That would be picked up by the zoning officer.
Yeah.
When you come in and say, was designed for vendors, no, I want, here's my house, I want to buy, zoning officer could catch that right then and say, wait, no, you can't.
Yeah, right, yeah.
If someone gets a variance to put an addition on, and they lose their job or have some financial. It's like, well, guess what, I got the, like, I have the variance, but I can't afford to do what I want to do anymore. Too bad, like, well, I can either, you can't.
Yeah, but I mean, at the same time, it's, it's, it's something that's just sitting out there that we have to.
I, I, I just don't know how to quote, I don't know if there's any way to do that.
I mean, following something that's, so Stony, Stony Brook Lane is off of, of the station. And you, you make the right onto level, they'll come over the train tracks. It's that, there's a two house to go on the left, and there's a little lane over there.
Yeah.
There's a center eight acre parcel. So they came in front of the board in two thousand and two. For some variances, for driveway placement. On that. And so that's been some questions that have been coming around recently.
For what replacement?
For a driveway placement.
The driveway, because again, it's a shared driveway and there's, there was some conditions based on that shared driveway, so.
Well, yeah, I mean, that has conditions, so I mean. You know, those conditions may have never been.
Twenty, twenty years ago.
Right.
That's one of those cases, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'll reach out to, to Scott and have a couple of these questions answered. Uh. Alright, open and call it.
So move.
Second.
Falls in favor.
Hi.
Right. Charlie. What I can say is if it's. About your specific, your desire for the application that you've. Brought forth, um, you can't discuss that where there's, there's a possible application coming in front of board. Alright, um. I don't want to short circuit you. But I also don't, I don't want you to start talking about something if you're going to be putting an application in front of us.
Well, I won't put an application in if I get denied.
If you get denied.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on.
No, obviously.
Hold on. Um.
I don't want to say deny, I, I want an opinion. And I, and if the opinion doesn't go my way, I'm not going to spend thousands of dollars to, to do something that's not worth it, that's what I'm saying.
So. Um, so you went to the zoning officer?
Yep.
Um, the zoning officer looked at your paperwork. And, and discussed what your, what your plan incorrect?
No, no, I went to the zoning officer, explained to Sarah what I wanted to do.
Okay.
She goes, let me look into it, I'll get back to you.
Okay.
The next day she emailed me and she says, Charlie, you go ahead, you can do it, just do not over exceed the thirty-five feet for heights. And if there's any other variances, you know, that, or any other uh, zoning, any zoning.
She, she would have had to tell you if there was any variances required, needed.
She didn't, she didn't, that's what I'm saying, she says, if you needed any uh, other zoning. And I, I emailed her back and actually, I ended up talking to her, I said, is my setback line, she didn't even think about the setback lines. And she, I said the setback lines, and she says, let me look into this, and whoever she contacted and talked to said, no, you don't need a variance. And my question was to her, is I'm not changing the footprint at all. I just want to put a new roof on the place and go with higher pitch. And she's, no, 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 because you're going higher, I said, I'm not going both in thirty-five feet, I'm not going wire, I'm, I'm just, the roof's uh, original in that building. The last string we just got on Saturday, I had three more links to command. And I, I want to pull that roof off and put plywood and shingles down, I want to raise it up, make it steeper, put plywood and shingles on to it, and make it storage up there, very storage, that's all I was looking for, go straight up. And, and if I can do it, I can do it right now, but my, middle of my building will be about eighteen feet wide, that's it, because I wrote my plan showing the setback lines.
Okay, did, did, did Sarah bring up in a report to the tax committee about any of this, Paul?
Did Sarah, did Sarah bring up what?
Did, has, has Sarah brought up to any sort of uh discussion about plan with Charlie for this?
Not that I saw at the last meeting, we were meeting Thursday night, so I don't know what Charlie meant with her.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What, what, where was that building constructed?
Back in two thousand, nineteen ninety-nine.
No, of course not.
Your addition or the?
Addition, the original building.
Oh, yeah, yeah, wait.
Original building is back, we're early seventies.
So what you want to do, you have the existing building.
Correct.
You're just changing the pitch, the walls aren't moving in or out?
No, I'm just going straight up and I might have the door open out the front so it looks like something instead of a church pitch. That's all I want to do, go straight up.
Don't we, don't we allow for people to come in for informal? Kind of question and answer?
Well, this has been going on for a few weeks now, so we've been trying to work back and forth to get answers for it, um, so. So Scott ended up getting back to Monica um about the question. And his feeling is that you, you are still, because it's storage, you're intensifying the use of what you already have there. You know, so. You're not expanding the footprint, I mean, there's, you know, you're not going outside, not going to say it's a, it's. It's not as challenging as some of our applications though, but according to our attorney and, yes, you still, you already need it. You know, al, yeah, ultimately, it's not our attorney at this point that's really. Looking at it, because it's not the application that's in front of us, um, this is, can be, you know, this is, this is our zoning officer's really. The job, unless you want to um. Question what her decision was, and then you can put the application together, look at that and.
Yeah, realistically, if I didn't commit on the site and put a new roof on the place, she would have given me zoning clearance. And then I could have just changed the pitch, I was just being honest, I only changed the pitch a little higher, so I won't be, that's all.
Unfortunately, that's a pre-existing non-conforming use there.
No, it isn't, my building was there well before that zone, you know what I'm saying?
That building was.
But you had, you expanded.
But then you expanded it.
The non-conforming.
No, I didn't expand that building, I pulled it down.
No, you added on to that building. So what happened?
The use on the property, that structure, the building, was an expansion of a non-conforming.
Right.
And so what this is, is a further expansion of a non-conforming. That's the only, you're not going bigger, meaning side yard setbacks or bulk variances per se, you're just, the expansion is. Is more storage room. Is it, is it minor, I, I?
My opinion it would be, you know, you can poll everybody here, you know, I mean.
It, it's, it's something that.
It's just you don't realize the money you're getting into, because now I have to hire an attorney, because I'm in LLC. And I'm going to spend, you know, five or ten grand on engineering drawings and, and, and this thing drying up for six months, you know.
I don't, I don't think it's that. I mean, you heard in our first conversation, I mean, there has been two grants spent on a shed here.
I know, but that, that was taking different footprint, I'm not changing a footprint.
I, I get it, I get it, and this is only a small potting shed.
That was done. So I could go back to Sarah and say, I want a new roof line, and, and that's it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean. I can tell you that for the most part. You know, my main concerns are, you know, encroachment on people's property, which you don't have, and conceding our.
The height.
Our heights, which you don't have, but. So, you know, the, the things that you have, in my opinion, and that's just my opinion, are kind of minor. And, you know, if nothing else were to be um. Testified to that would change my mind, I would be inclined to give you that variance. But that's just it, and that's without any testimony done yet, okay, so.
Are, are you planning to uh store things there differently than what you have in store now that you're storing?
I have a pack through my bottom line off down, so, and I want, and stuff that I have, hoses, you know, all, all filters and.
You can't, you can't really testify, because you're not doing, kind of here, I mean, until you testify, I'm sorry. I was trying not to get it, get it.
I was just trying to hear as much as I could.
Post, I really stretched it, so. I think it would be a reasonable amount for it, it's, it's not a, it's not a new building, maybe quite enough, so.
I would like if you just had an architect or a roof.
Yeah.
Wouldn't need an engineer unless.
Well, engineers.
An engineer, it's no, or something like that, you just gotta make sure to verify all that, so you, yes, you have an architect or, or an engineer sign off on it.
Sarah, for me, because I'm an LLC, I need an attorney.
Yeah.
Yeah, so ding ding.
Yeah. I mean. This is not a risk, and actually, it's better for you, by the way, you have an attorney.
I know, but it. It's how much money do you put out and get it?
No, I understand.
So, any other comments?
Uh, any updates on the landscape place thirty-four, thirty-three?
I have nothing here.
Is that an application before?
No.
Well, they have a nest bro down here and they can go over.
But, I mean, it's not, it's not an application before us, then we really can't discuss it.
Well, there's nothing there that we have.
Yeah.
Nothing, yeah. Any questions on Zoom? Motion closed.
Second.
Falls in favor.
Hi.
Okay, uh, the March tenth meeting minutes.
Okay, so. I don't know, I'm, I'm really allowed this much power, but it says that I.
Public comment, it was both the Jose's, it was both of you both times.
Okay, you fixed it over there, okay, good. I, I saw it on the, see, I was doing what Jeff wanted us to do, I saw it when it was online and.
Yeah. Well, it's because.
And you need to take power out. From the turn. And that's, that's your template.
Yeah.
Jose Reyes should no longer second my money.
Oh, yeah.
Welcome to accept the uh, the minutes. Direct.
Second.
Any further discussion? Falls in favor?
Hi.
Attention? Alright, uh. I have been. Going to involve in the warehouse situation in Greenwich. And um. Making a couple of comments to us as far as our town here, um. Knowing that we are island's preserve and they are island's plan, which does make it, check, make a difference. But one of the big. Um. Things that have happened here is they came for an informal. Um, back in twenty-three, I think over twenty-three, in front of the land use board. And they discussed over a meeting and a half, um. What their plans were. And then waited a year and a half, township committee decided that they were going to take the term warehouse out of the, of their R O M zone. Alright, so they voted for it, they took the. All right, so they voted for it, they took the term R O M out. They didn't really uh. Change some of the wordings that are in the definitions. Um, they're also permitting light manufacturing. So in this case, when we went through our master plan, the town, townspeople, and we all decided that warehousing needed to be excluded from our town. Okay, um, this is a case where they wanted a warehouse, they called it, they basically called it a warehouse, although they say that they didn't. And now they are calling it light manufacturing. And it looks like a warehouse and it basically is a warehouse, the difference is they have a basically like a thirty, thirty, thirty percent roll. So thirty percent storage, thirty percent manufacturing, thirty percent office is what in their, their definition for R O M. So a concern, and that's something we should look into and make sure that we're a little bit more bulletproof. Is to make sure that, you know, the terms that we have in some of our zones can't be misconstrued as something else and legal binding. Right, once, once that application comes in front of us, none of this can be changed. So there are applications in front of us, we are in Highlands, we have a lot more protections than what they have in the planning zone. But, you know, there's some other warehouse applications also in Franklin now. So for some reason, things are starting to get busy, where there could be three warehouses now and then a fourth immediately. So I think being a little bit more, whether it happens or not, I don't think we want to be on the, on the receiving end of the problem. If it's something that we can at least look at and make sure that it doesn't happen, just if it means adding some definitions, you know. Or if it means doing nothing, and we, you know, if there's a consequence for it, then we do. But I think part of us as a planning board is to make sure that planning goes the way the town wants it. And the town, at least during our, our master plan, made it pretty clear by a lot of the comments, by comments made by the public. And by members of this board that we definitely don't want warehousing here. So I think we should make sure that, you know, again, any of the zones that we have, you know, light manufacturing. I don't know if we get a, a term that fits better for our town. We, you know, make a definition that fits better, if we limit, you know, doorways, um. Light manufacturing is a use, warehousing is a separate use, it is a different use. And so if you go for a, a, an application and you say that you're building light manufacturing. It better be light manufacturing, if it's warehousing, you can shut them down. And I mean, you know, these guys, I, I saw the application, I looked into it. These guys are saying everywhere, in all of their literature, and you know, they're building this on spec to rent it out to people. That this is light manufacturing, it's not warehousing. I mean, they have a lot of other stuff that they build that is warehousing. Certainly, the building, the way it looks, it could be used as a warehouse, but it could still also be used as light manufacturing. And be used for light manufacturing, they get it built, they get it finished, then they can't get it rented. And then they can, then they can come back to the board, to the land use board, and they can still change things. Yes, they can.
How?
They have another application.
Then they, they have to get it, then they have to get it approved.
But it's, yes, but it's built.
But it doesn't matter, it have, it would have to get approved for that use. We can't say that you can circumvent the, the rules just by building it to something else that you said you were gonna build it to. You know, that's, that's, that is like them, that's them rolling the dice really stupidly.
Yeah, I, I agree, but at the same time, we should make sure that we possible, it may be possible hoops, I understand what you're saying.
Again, I don't, I don't, I, I don't care, but I'm seeing this. I'm, I'm sitting in these meetings, I'm listening to all this testimony, and this is what's happening.
Yeah.
You know, and it's, it's, it's probably to some extent gonna happen. You know, if enough, you know, questions are not, are answered, then this is gonna happen. But there's two more that are in Franklin Township right over on the other side of the river. And the sad part is, we, we sit here at Bethlem Township, and we do all of this Highlands work, we do all of this planning. We're, you know, smart growth and how we're using our land on one side of the river, on the other side of the river, they're basically doing whatever they want.
No, we didn't, we didn't actually determine where, where the Highlands uses were. Because, you know, if I had my truckers, the Highlands would have excluded the R R R O M zones. Where we could have, we could have tried to get some radibles into this town on, on those properties. As it stands now, we can't do anything. And where their um planning zone leaks over into our town is in an area that, you know, it's all farm land. Makes no sense at all that it, that it'd be over there.
Well, it's all farm land.
What's that?
Everything's farm land that they're building there.
Well, I realize that, but they, 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 you know, they're, I always wondered why our planning area was put where our planning area was. And really, what it is, is an extension of their planning area. And that's what impacted us. So I mean, you know, we had, we had the forethought to just say that we're applying the, the preservation rules to the planning area. To limit that, because especially because, you know, one seventy-three is, is one traffic. You know, imagine if we had a light manufacturing facility going in with trucks driving past our, our grammar school all the time, you know. I mean, it's, it's a totally undevelopable area that they set up as our planning area. Whereas their planning area does make more sense in that respect.
But if there is possibility of that happening, what can we do?
Yeah, I think it's just, you know, it's all just making sure and verifying sense. If it, you know, again, we can do it, and uh.
I mean, I don't think that, you know, limiting height for light manufacturing for light overhead doors, that wouldn't make any difference at all. Because I, at my machine shop, I needed a high door, not for the trucks that were coming, but for the machines that I was bringing in. You know, the high doors, you know, a truck, he's only lit, but he's high, so I mean, it's not like.
No, I thought that the problem is one door, but it's when they propose fifty-four doors for four units, that's. That's symbolistic of when you look at a warehouse.
Yeah, I mean, it depends on.
And so fortunately, they've now pared it back because there's enough, you know, public discourse about it. Um, they're now down to thirty-four doors for four units. Eighty doors.
I still doesn't, can see, you know, talking about, you know, every detail, but.
Well, yeah, yeah, I mean. I pretty much think that our zoning is bulletproof, not because of anything that we've done, but because of Highlands. You know, there's really very little that we can put in, in anywhere that we can, that we could, you know. With it, with any good intention, allowed to, to have built, you know, you gotta have access either off of. One seventy-three, one seventy-three, I mean, like that, you know, to, to have access. The only access to our planning area was again, past our, our grammar school. The bridge, it's a, what, a two-ton limit or something like that. Um, so it's not like, you know, like that's the way we're going.
I mean, you, you're talking about Hop Hop, right?
Yeah.
I understand where it is.
I think it's a bad school.
First one thinking suddenly, I'm like, wait, that's not like a main access.
Go up there now. Just more traffic.
But yeah, I mean, it's, and it's, and neither way, it's also going.
About my house, my house is the gateway.
I see how the rush down that hill.
What about a floor area, the purchased coverage and stuff like that, I mean, that one.
Yeah.
Block these areas as well.
Yeah, our Florida ratios are not conducive to.
It's right on the river.
Well, they got the buffers.
They have a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer that they're buffering between the high water mark and the musky and their various covers.
No, no, Mayor Muir might be able to answer this better, but I thought something, I've heard something about Bloomsbury.
They never did, they never, they never knock anything, they never um apply for or have any sort of protections. You know, but.
So Ken, a couple, couple of things, uh, if I can jump in. Your connection's unstable, so um Bloomsbury has, has hired their own attorney, an additional attorney uh to fight this. And they've hired an additional planner, and Mayor Papix and I have, uh, let's say teamed up. Because we, we've made a lot of outreach over the past, a couple of weeks to uh leadership at the county level, at both Warren and Hunterdon. And then to the legislatures that represent both districts, so we, we have a meeting with Senator Steinhardt, May ninth. Uh, already set up to talk about this. Uh, Bloomsbury is actually a designated historic district, it, it is registered with the state historic preservation office, I provided the paperwork to Mayor Papix. Uh, the bill disallowing warehouses uh within a thousand feet of the historic district is not approved in New Jersey yet. But it's good to know that it's progressing and could be used in this discussion, however, this is, has all been shared, not presented as a warehouse. Um, the, the design of that building very much looks like a warehouse, so we're hoping that some of the experts point that out and start to poke through it. But uh, it seems like some of the senior uh leadership at the state level is starting to look into this as well. I, I don't know where it's gonna go yet, but we're making every effort that, that we can uh to uh, to find out what avenues we can to protect. We're also reaching out to DOT about the traffic in one seventy-three and um why they may have given approvals or may not have approvals. Uh, basically increased traffic.
They, they have not had their traffic engineer testify yet. So, they'll be coming at the uh, for the second meeting of many to come, I'm sure. Something for us to, just to pay attention to, because it's a very similar community, except for the Highlands component of it, so.
Have we posed the question to our professionals like Scott here or the township attorney?
Yeah, township attorney.
As far as like things that they've seen, I mean, we can come up with all the ideas in the world.
Yeah, I, I. I mean, the township.
Lower doors and things like that, but they might know some more rock solid methods, you know, for us to solidify our standards.
I don't know, as far as. Mike, um, for you, uh, I did get him a complete application package, so he does have all that. Um, he has not responded as far as the attorney and branch has told me that he has not received any response from Bethlem Township, so. That's, that's, that's where it is right now.
I mean, I think that, that basically stating as we have, that warehouse use is not permitted in Bethlem Township. You know, you really cannot budge the use, you can't budge a use, it's, it's, you know, every plot, every tenant that goes in there has to be approved for that. Use, and if you, if you say, oh, I'm, I'm gonna be warehousing, you can't do it. You know, I, I mean, I know that, you know, if, if we're gonna say that, oh, you can just place the rules and then somehow get in just because you already built it. Then our laws make no difference whatsoever anyway. I mean, you know, they, our laws are enforceable as a default, you know.
And you can't really try and rent it, not find anyone to come back to the board and say financial hardship, because that doesn't.
That doesn't lie.
Yeah.
You know, you should have done your homework before you applied for this. You know, you should have checked out, and I, I mean, this company that's doing this is not a small company, they've got big buildings all over the place. And, you know, they've got a lot of warehouses that they say is warehouse. So, I mean, you know, they, they might be trying to cover it, but it wouldn't do them any good because the use is what's permitted, not, not the building.
They, I guess they have publicly stated that they have tenants already signed to prove that it's not warehousing, and I assume they're gonna present that in the meeting. But they've created their own um public social media page at this point now, answering a lot of the public questions uh as well, so. I don't know if anybody's seen that, but it's been shared on the Bloomsbury Bulletin Board, uh, like I said, the developers creating their own communications um effort at this point as well.
But as of this past Thursday, their, all their professionals stated that they had no tenants at this point. It was the town and the questioning by both the Bloomsbury attorney and the Skylands Alliance attorney. They both questioned about, about tenants, and they have no tenants according to, according to that testimony. People want to know what, what it's used for. That's, that's, that's just what, what, what it, what it was as far as the last meeting, it could have changed between then and now, so. So, and that's it, again, it's, if it's a light manufacturing, it's their thirty, thirty split, thirty, thirty, thirty split, then, you know, that's fine. Just, I'm bringing up to, to what I'm, I'm seeing here, and, you know, what people are concerned about, what the residents are concerned about. And, you know, the comments that are being made, so.
Bloomsbury Franklin, they, they're on the riverside of that range, you know?
Franklin, Franklin Township, they, the one that, the same property that was um, they were working on maybe two years ago, three years ago.
Nine on the state, I thought.
They were, they were gonna redevelop that, it was a site in need for redevelopment, and it was a farm, that's what they applied for. But that was turned down, but.
That wasn't on the riverside.
No, that's, that's, that's actually off of uh, that's very Bloomsbury Road.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and that, that was, what they were trying to do is they were trying to say that that was a, a site.
In need of redevelopment.
Of redevelopment.
Yeah.
And, you know, that was Benbo's idea, and uh, you know, that's what he told them to do. And basically, the state came back and said, it's a farm, why would it be in need of redevelopment? So, and, and that, you know, and that was a different use, they were looking into, to use that as a big um warehouse. Um, like a, a, not just one warehouse, a number of warehouses.
Yeah, yeah, more like a, like an AgriSol brand complex.
Yeah, uh, yeah, it was gonna be a complex, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so I mean, you know, that was totally, you know, it, again, I mean, if what the applicant is. Coming in for is for something that their zoning says is allowed, then that's what's allowed. You know, and, you know, of course, the, the town has the, has the ability to control that. Because there's a, there's a, a site plan, and that's, that's where we get our control of anything like that.
That, that just brings it right back to what I was saying, is the point is, it's allowed in that zone. But they're taking what, what they were looking at, and they're just renaming, it's basically they're renaming, they're just renaming something.
Can't rename a use.
They're, they're renaming the use of what this property would be, a warehouse and they use, and they, like industrial, they use, they were both uses.
But you can't, you can't say that you're, you're doing the light industrial and then, and then say, no, we're gonna do it as a warehouse. You can't rent it out as a warehouse, and anybody, any tenant who tried to get in there as a warehouse would, would be cited and shut down by the uh. By the, by the uh, by the, yeah, by, by the zoning officer, if they want to do it. Well, I mean, if they want a, if they want a warehouse in there, then they should just say they're really having a warehouse.
Oh, yeah.
You know.
They actively removed the word warehouse, so why would they now, two years later, say, oh?
Yeah, it, it, it's not, I mean, again, we have to.
They, they don't want it, but this was all done in a matter of two months, it, it was rough. And there's paperwork behind it, and there's, they have receipts there. So, the term came up, they, the town rushed to, you know, to change things, because there was no active application, so legally speaking, they were able to do it. No. But that's, but that's happening over there, so they were talking a thousand, a thousand trucks a day, at exit seven.
What's that?
Yeah, a thousand trucks a day at the intersection of exit seven and seventy-eight.
That was a warehouse?
No, that's what their traffic engineer is gonna be discussing.
Well, has he discussed it?
No, this is, it's in their reports.
That's okay.
Not a thousand, due to that, a thousand due to the truck stop and the gas.
No, they didn't, they didn't do the traffic study at exit seven, they did the traffic study at Asbury Bloomsbury Road and one seventy-three. So that intersection is on the other side of the bridge where there's a nice sign that says, no tractor trailers allowed beyond this point. You know, like that really, Mac is, is a sign right there that says, no tractor trailers allowed. But they did the traffic study past that, and they still have a number of trucks that illegally crossed over that into, into Warren County. No.
So when that lands, very, very right.
So that's their traffic study, so they're, they're not too concerned that many, they didn't carry, they, they just didn't carry it to where the truck stop is.
That bridge even gamble on each truck.
People, people are questioning that, but it's, 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 it's one seventy-three, no.
That's the only way that you can get on seven eighty-eight west.
No.
From the truck stop. And even the seventy-eight west from the truck stop.
No, no, even though it's.
And go on the waste area.
Yeah. But I mean, still, it is a way that you could go, the mountain, it's okay, it was.
Unless the traffic's going.
Well.
Most of the trip, but.
Well, certainly, it's interesting.
And now you're gonna have everybody looking off in Phillipsburg, taking one seventy-three all the way down too. And avoiding the waste area.
What town is that? Um, if you drive one seventy-three towards Phillipsburg. No, past that where the, it's now Metro Tech, the old used car dealership that's on that, if you look off on a distance, there's a warehouse being built, like Alphay?
That's Alphay.
There's a no.
Another new one, yeah.
What are two more?
Two more?
One more.
Well, that's a big, that, that area.
That's a lot of.
I don't, I don't know if there are all warehouses though either, because there's a lot of businesses back there.
Oh, just looking at what you can see from one seventy-three.
Well, I mean, yeah.
Maybe it's light manufacturing.
Or heavy.
With, with a hundred and twelve doors.
I haven't, there's a, I mean, there, I used to use a lot of companies that were in that, uh, helping all there. There's a bunch of machine shops and a bunch of other.
Yeah, but how will those tractor trailers get to seventy-eight?
They go up, um, up the, the road that ends up by the, um.
On that attack?
Uh, no, they went each to, I, uh.
No, they're gonna go around to one point, one point two.
Yeah.
Oh, comes up by that with quick check in the.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. You know.
Right, where they want native entrance, when they made that entrance.
Yeah, that, and that's, how do you swing a tractor trailer into that intersection, that's gotten, that's, wow.
Thousand times a day. Somebody like Phillipsburg, all the way that one little warehouse is down by there. They're growing strawberries in it.
Hmm, that's a good idea. Yeah, I mean, that's the thing is that everything that I hear is.
Hydro pot.
Everything I hear is that warehouses are not doing well in this area, that they, they have way too much.
They testified they're six percent. That are empty and that's it.
Six percent.
Of all warehouses that are in New Jersey, so it's a ninety-four percent off.
Well, I don't believe that, but.
Yeah.
Once in Phillipsburg, I see three trucks there and it didn't even take long.
But they might, they, they might be growing strawberry.
But that's not a warehouse.
But that's, it's. They could grow strawberry every year around here, I've been born in one of the countries.
I'd be supportive of that, but just calling something other than a warehouse.
Well, they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be calling it a warehouse then. They have to get, so if, if it's, if it was built as a warehouse. And they wanna grow strawberries in it, they have to change the use.
What about it's manufacturing?
It's, no.
You're manufacturing?
They consider.
No, it would probably be considered manufacturing, because you're basically.
It's farm.
Well, it is farming, it's not traditional.
Non-traditional?
It's non-traditional.
Kind of like a non-traditional farm that's in the old.
It's still one on twenty-two in Whitehouse.
I mean, it's not, it's hydro, you said it's hydro. You said hydro.
Yeah.
So hydroponics, you know, that, that would be, that would be a concern because of the water use and, and what that does to the water. You know, because you're, you're going through a lot of water, you're gonna take water in to, to, to plant all that stuff, you're putting fertilizers and. And chemicals into it.
It's a closed system.
It is a closed system, but you gotta replace it with water, and some of it's gotta go when it gets, if it gets too, uh. Too concentrated, I guess they can dilute it.
When some gets off the plants, then they, they have to adjust.
Yeah, 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 but I mean, it's still a big use of water.
Well, they're growing, they're growing vegetables on roofs of buildings, cities.
But, but. Yeah.
All right, so twenty twenty-five financial disclosure forms need to be filled out by April thirtieth. Christine, fuck mom, keep it down. Their, revise application, you want to do it up there?
Um, well, we had a lot of computer issues, um, so there was some delay in that, I'm still working on it, um. I reached out to Cherry Hill, um, because their application is very user friendly, it's. Has a lot of explanation and definitions and stuff that are really good. And Cherry Hill, um, sent me all their Word documents so that I can just. Make it our own, so I'm working on that, I'm not there yet, but I'm working.
Right, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, the only thing I would add is, uh, we have our township committee meeting Thursday evening and the, uh. We have our budget, uh, approval on the agenda, which is probably the most significant thing. That we have going on, uh, at the meeting. Um, a lot of other activities, everybody's seen, not necessarily land use related, but with JCPN L and tree trimming, as I shared at last meeting, so they are hard at work and. Um, Deputy Mayor Nelson and DPW supervisor have been out, uh, monitoring. So a lot of good progress there, but, uh, again, our, our budget, uh, will be, uh, on the agenda for approval on Thursday night, and I apologize if I'm not there in person, every once in a while, I'll have another meeting that. Coincides this night and I, you know, wouldn't be able to be able to travel back and forth between, so, uh, appreciate the Zoom consideration. And that's it.
Thank you, you're.
Uh, yeah, just want to remind everybody of Clean 'Em Day. April twenty-sixth, we've added, um, electronic recycling. To, yeah, you ran the secure company, which is great, um. Trees will be helping out, um, so do I secure a hundred and seventy-five trees, I'm gonna do three per resident right now, I may up that, but. I wasn't able to secure as many as I wanted to. Um, state had kind of pared back the program this year to allow some saplings to grow. Uh, I am doing the clothing drive, um, thanks to the Cub Scout pack, so we'll be doing that as well. Um, so it's gonna be a. Okay. Yeah, it's seven thirty to two P M.
So electronics is anything, TVs, all TVs?
Yeah. It's on the website, I believe, as to what is accepted, on all three, it's not there.
No, it's, it's, but the batteries not. Look at the website.
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my.
I forget the batteries.
The batteries are not included. Honestly, no, no.
So with tree trimming, they did a great job down one seventy-three, everybody tends to always comment on it because so many people drive it. And now there's another tree that's laying in the waters. So, it was on the, closer to your house, so.
Yes.
There's been one leaning that's on the, on the cable wires, the phone wires, which don't necessarily mean a whole lot, but. Over the last day or so, or two days now, there's one on the high voltage lines all the way up top. Which is gonna require JCPN L, right in the same exact spot, just above it.
Well, then we can, well.
You pull JCPN L before there's a problem, the wire.
I'll make a note to talk to Jeff, to talk to the project manager, they're on site for a few more weeks, so.
They did such a nice job, it's a shame to see that, so, and I think everybody sees that.
Well, they're right here.
They're, they're here to have them stop by and knock those two pieces back up.
Batteries are not listed.
The what?
Batteries are not listed as either prohibited or accepted for some reason.
I'm bringing all my.
Then bring them in.
Bring your batteries.
They're like, yes, they'll take them, I don't know, what can they do, they can stay now. It's about all we can do.
So if, if, if a tree's leaning on power lines, it, it'll be arcing.
Yes. It's there. Uh, it doesn't now.
Yeah, because those lines are not, they're not.
Oh, it's seven thousand volts, and if the tree is dry enough, it's not.
Yeah, it's, it's raining. When did it come down?
I talked.
I mean.
I just want to tell you, so it's there a hundred percent.
I mean, the truth of the matter is, it's supposed to, you know, when, when you take down a bunch of trees, sometimes trees support other trees. You know, my, my next.
Oh, it's not his fault, it's just they did a nice job.
Yeah.
They trimmed everything back and, but now there's a problem, right?
That's what happens.
While they're still here, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Cut those two down and hit the ground, they don't have to chip them.
My, my neighbors took down some huge pine trees that were right next to. To our, uh, were right on the property line, and we had other trees that were kind of growing in between. When they took down those trees, the next storm came down, our tree went right down and planted their bark.
So speaking of tractor trailers, no one noticed. Another tractor trailer, episode number, I don't know, ten or twelve, tried to make the impossible one hundred and eighty degree turn onto Brunswick Pike and took out the street light and hard hard again last week, so. Actually, you know what's funny? I've seen three trucks on that road in the last week. On, on, uh, Westport Ward, I didn't even, I didn't realize they could make it through that tunnel.
I mean, they go, they go there all the time, they have to go.
I didn't know.
Oh, no, they went, every day.
That's kind of a girl.
Every day.
So we used to have a farmer that was selling water, so he had to, he had a big, uh, a big water tanker that would come every day. Or I think twice a day. What did you, so what was he doing, he was doing the, so in other words, he didn't go down Brunswick Pike or he went?
He didn't like to turn by the.
They don't get turned.
And so he started up the hill, and he's like, okay, now I'm gonna do the one eighty down, and then they do it, once a year they do it, and they take it up the telephone, but our. Bro, please, put a target on the walls.
I swear, truck drivers have no longer know how to drive.
I think someone told me, they use old car GPSs that haven't been updated forever.
Yeah.
But I still think the other road still existed in twenty years, like I still.
I mean, you still have to be able to see that, oh, boy, this is a really tight turn. And I've got a tractor trailer here.
His car ran there, I think.
I just attempted, um, told Jeff, call me tomorrow.
Great. And whatever's happening. Right?
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, I did have one thing, I'm sorry. Um, we do have the, um. By June thirtieth, we need to adopt the housing element and fair share plan, so we should definitely make sure that, um, June, we, we never bring for ourselves.
Do, what do you, what do you mean?
We need to approve. We don't make it.
So we have to, yeah, we have to get that from the township committee and just say that it's.
Not, and not.
Not inconsistent with our master plan.
Right, just giving you a word that. It has to be done by June, so we should be seeing that, sure.
What about, no, what?
Will they wait for the middle of the summer?
Nothing at this point.
Yeah. Trying to ruin our summer.
There, there were some applications out, they just haven't been returned yet for various different things. Phil, who's Jerk? Steven, or Mary?
Hi, hi.
Thank you.
Fifty-three million square feet, that are vacant, warehouse, and it's. They're taking fifty-three million square.
They're moving a lot of that. Are these like.
No, we're just gonna go like.
They're probably, yeah, I don't know, maybe water.
Small.
I'm curious.
Yeah.